So I call the order this regular scheduled mini-meeting of the 34th City Council for December 10, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Just a kind reminder, everyone in the audience, please silence your cellphones and communicate or any communication device as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Ken Paris. Ken?
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I would actually like to turn the meeting over to Pastor Josh Leveque of the Dearborn Baptist Church. It's my pleasure to introduce him. He's going to give us the invocation for tonight's meeting. So everyone that's able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council. Let's open our meeting in a word of prayer. Father in heaven, we come together tonight to ask your blessing on our city. Thank you for the many blessings and freedoms that we enjoy, especially here in the city of Dearborn. Thank you, Lord, that we have a government and a city council that values prayer and is still committed to the practice of invoking heavenly wisdom and executing our civil duties here. I do pray for the council tonight, Lord, that you would grant great wisdom and grace as they deal with the many issues that are placed in front of them. Lord, I pray for all of our city employees, Lord, our first responders, law enforcement, Lord, that you would grant safety over the holiday season as they serve this city. And Lord, I pray that as we celebrate the Christmas season here in Dearborn and all around the world, that we would all come to know the promise of peace on earth, goodwill toward men, Lord, that's made possible through the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Lord, may you bless the city of Dearborn, bless this meeting tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next is our public comment. Council rules were enacted this term to allow up to 30 minutes for public comment prior to our business items to better serve our residents. If anyone would like to address the council regarding city business that is not on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, we kindly ask that you wait until that agenda item. So we do have comment cards, so I'm going to call them in order. If you don't have, if you don't fill out a comment card, just please raise your hand to be recognized. First, we have Mr. Bill Broad. Thank you, sir. So just state your name and address for the record, sir.
Bill Broad, 217-34-Carlyle.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say good evening to ladies and gentlemen and esteemed members of the council. I have two things, they both have to do with public safety. But first, I'd like to give a shout out to a young man who works for the city of Dearborn in the Economic Development Division, and that would be Julian Toma. I have called this young man quite a few times for some problems we've had down at the Westbourne Shopping Center and some other places, and he either calls me back that day or even answers his phone when I call, which these days is about as rare as hen's teeth. My first issue is about the parking. I believe Dearborn, like most municipalities in southeastern Michigan, has an ordinance that says motor vehicles cannot be parked closer than 20 feet to a corner. And this is because it blocks the views of people who are looking to see if traffic is cleared. And I've seen this problem happen in my neighborhood. We had an accident in August, two women at the corner of Dudley and Carlyle. I live on Carlyle between Dudley and Catherine, and I believe that that accident may have been caused by a vehicle that was parked too close to the corner all summer long. That vehicle is no longer there, perhaps the person is no longer living in that house. But we still had the problem at 21,000 Carlyle, at the northwest corner of Harding and Carlyle. There is a vehicle there at that corner that's always parked closer than even 12 feet to the corner. You know, there, it's, it's close enough. And when I was out walking the other night after dinner, there was almost an accident at that corner. Somebody was southbound on Harding, heading towards Dartmouth, and there was a vehicle eastbound on Carlyle. And the gentleman that started to cross Carlyle, and it's possible because of that vehicle parked there. And I'd like to see if the police can step up and take care of this particular one and maybe some other issues that are like that. The second one, real quick, is about Shemansky Park. In Dearborn, we have an unwritten rule that people that walk go clockwise and people that ride bikes go counterclockwise. And Dearborn has painted on the ground arrows. They usually put walking with an arrow going clockwise and wheels going counterclockwise. I wish they changed the second one to bikes because they both begin with a W. Now, over in Shemansky Park, they have those markings on the sidewalk for the track that goes around it.
You have 30 seconds.
Might be 10 years old because they are worn out. They've also put down tar strips to keep the water from getting underneath the asphalt, and it's gone over these things. And last summer, I was walking, I'm sure other people are too, and there was a gentleman that weighed about 200 pounds, and he was on one of those bikes with the really thick tires. And if somebody like that hits someone, they can seriously injure them. And if it's an 80-year-old lady and she gets her hip broken, that's almost a death sentence. So I hope that before the summer comes, we can alleviate that problem by putting those markings in several spots at that park and the other parks as well.
Thank you very much. We'll make a note, Jackie, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for a referral, just to check on Shemansky Park on those, on those lots and to the police regarding the parking that he indicated. So thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else here to address the city council regarding city business that is not an agenda item? Step forward, sir, and just state your name and address for the record.
Ted Barham. I'm a Dearborn resident, and I would like to ask for your help for something that we are planning for January, January 9, 10, and 11. So a new year and a new beginning on the whole, all the terrible things that have been happening over in Israel and Palestine and the Middle East keep spreading. Anyway, so I'm going to bring in two men, the tickets are booked, two gentlemen, one from the West Bank and the other from Israel. They work together in the Civic Center in, let me see, Club Room 1. And so, so that's booked as well. And the Palestinian gentleman, he used to be high up in the PLO. He was the personal driver for Yasser Arafat, and he, he was a sniper. But they're both quite elderly gentlemen. Anyway, this Palestinian gentleman, he became a Christian years ago, and one of the verses that's in the Bible that really inspired him is the one that says, "The peacemakers are blessed." And he said, "The peacemakers are blessed." Wow, he really loved that because he said before, before now, I've always been a troublemaker. So he's been working to be a peacemaker since then. In fact, we want to call this event, "The Peacemakers Are Blessed" discussions. And I think Dearborn is a good place for that to happen as the Arab capital of America. I just want to say about that, these are my words, not his, about the peacemakers are blessed. I understand the anti-Zionism in a lot of ways. I think it's terrible how so many people have been killed, particularly in the case of the children, but it's, you know, it's, it's always sad. War is always sad. And, but in regards to Zion, I feel, as a Christian, I say Zion is our only hope, it's the world's only hope. Zion and the temple on Zion are a symbol of peace, and they're a symbol of the ultimate sacrifice that brings peace for believers on, on Mount Zion. And actually...
You have 30 seconds.
I just want to, well, I could say a lot of other things I could ramble on, but this is what I want to say. Basically, this, this Israeli Jewish man wants to come here to work with the Palestinian gentleman for peacemaking. And I would love if we could work together to make sure that this Israeli man who used to be a senior official in the Israeli government, but now he works for peace, that we could make sure that he would be safe here in Dearborn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, anyone else here to address the council regarding city business that is not on the city agenda? Okay. At this time, Mr. Clerk, 7:24, we will close the public comment portion. And before we move to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wished to remove from the consent agenda to discuss individually? Hearing and seeing none, then I would proceed. Mr. Clerk, you can proceed with your...
So now we need a resolution, need a offer and support.
Offer.
Approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
All right, was that Councilmember Inos? Okay, offered by Councilmember Inos, supported by Councilmember El-Sawafi. Any questions or comments? Okay, and can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Inos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yays, the resolution to, for the consent agenda has passed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the next item?
First item is number 12, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Abraham approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of November 19, 2024.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any additions, deletions, or modification to these minutes? All right. Hearing and seeing none, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 13, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1831, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section 17.03 of Article 17.00 entitled Development Standards, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Currently, the East Downtown is regulated via zoning overlay known as a BD or Downtown Business District, which provides specific design standards that are applicable from a top of a zoning perspective requirements. The proposed amendment would create a public parking exemption area in the East Downtown which mirrors the parking exemption that we have existing currently in the West Downtown. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this amendment. There is approximately 2,750 parking, public parking spaces in East Downtown. A recent study showed that only 36% occupancy for these public parking is, is being used at this time, which means there's plenty ample parking in the area. The proposed amendment would, would have to take immediate impact on the East Downtown by eliminating, it would have immediate impact by eliminating a significant barrier for businesses that are trying to open in the area. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamud?
As I've always talked about, and I'll say, I'm just really happy that we're finally doing this because I think this is one of those things that helps put the East Dearborn Downtown development, especially economic development, on the same footprint and on the same foot as the West Dearborn Downtown, which I think we've seen a lot of the success that happened in the West Dearborn Downtown now with our increased walkability. I mean, businesses in the East Dear, in the West Dearborn Downtown tend to get three times as much traffic as the East Dearborn Downtown. That's just a fact. Part of that is allowing for more density and allowing people to create a more walkable environment with the urban development design. So I think this is a great step in the right direction, so I'm really happy that you guys are bringing this forward.
All right, any other questions, comments? Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. When we have a special assessment district for parking, what it does is it takes the burden of paying for parking off of taxpayers, I'm sorry.
This isn't an exception.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's an exemption.
Oh, this is the exemption. I apologize, wrong item.
That's okay. Yeah, no...
You can talk about it.
That wasn't...
My point was going to be, parking aside, my point was going to be just taking burdens away from the business owners when they're trying to develop a business in a business district. Because, you know, in the past, we've had a number of businesses that have come to the city and said, "How can we make it a smoother process for them to open their business?" And sometimes it's paperwork, sometimes it's a burden, some process, but sometimes, you know, it's something that we can make a change where we can share in the upkeep of the neighborhood to make it more walkable and make it easier for businesses to all be accessible to their patrons. So glad we're doing things to open businesses.
I appreciate it. And just to follow up on that, I appreciate the administration with doing this parking study, the shoulders ample study, so it's not something we just ad hoc to put together. And more importantly, I don't know why it was in West Dearborn Downtown but not in the East Dearborn Downtown. So I think it's a long time coming and was very necessary, didn't make no sense not to have it in both downtowns, and it is going to make an immediate impact. There's a reason why businesses have not been able to open, so hopefully this will get us in the right direction. So you were on the right track there. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1831, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section 17.03 of Article 17.00 entitled Development Standards.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Councilmember Inos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yays, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item 14, ordinance number 24-1832, introduced by Council President Serini, synopsis and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section 1.03 of Article 1.00 entitled Short Title Rules of Construction and Definition, Article 3.00 entitled Nonconformities, and section 29.02 of Article 29.00 entitled Schedule of Regulations, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city council has requested updates and modifications to the nonconformity regulations to provide a more flexible, more flexibility for existing single-family homes with nonconformity setbacks. Approximately 45% of the homes in Dearborn were built prior to 1950. As a result, the city's aging housing stock is experiencing increasing pressure for modernization, expansions, repairs to meet standards and preferences of today. However, however, the existing single-family homes are not met with, are currently met with procedural barriers due to restrictions of nonconformity regulations, which will not permit modifications. This change that is coming forward is something that's a long time coming. That was, we've met many times with the planners to give most people ideas if your house was built and you had between you and your neighbor 10 feet, and next year we made it nine, if you wanted to expand, you would actually have to build your house in one more foot and have it jagged in, which made absolutely no sense. What we're trying to do here is make sure that your nonconformity doesn't expand, stays in the same where it is, because rules change and things change throughout the time that when you bought, excuse me, when you bought your property, should be grandfather dead and you should be able to update it. So this is the first reading, and it was, it did go to the Planning Commission and recommended for approval on November 18 at their November 18 meeting. And it's also recommended by our Planning Division as well. So this will eliminate the significant barriers and procedurals that we have, procedural aspect that we have of going through planning and zoning for, for major changes. Any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamud?
I think this is another one that's, we've been working on for a little while that I think has a bigger impact than people might realize, just because so many of the zoning requests we get and so many of the building permits that get delayed are partially due to the zoning process and the fact that so many homes in the city are already nonconforming. So I think this is one of those things that's common sense, that, you know, your gut tells you you want to do it, but the problem is the process and nailing down the right way to do it took a long time, and I think we went, we all went back and forth and found a, a really good solution. So this is another one of those where I can't wait for this one to, just like with the lot coverage discussion, I think we arrived in a really good place that balances all the needs while also just making logical sense. So I really appreciate the outcome of where we got to with this one.
Right, and we had many discussions regarding this, myself mainly too, regarding the time it took for the resident to get through the process, and that wasn't all, all the city situation. There is legal requirements and notice requirements that basically took at least three months to get anything through, which, you know, I always believe when you have that much barriers, you're going to encourage people to, to not go through the process. So we're hoping that this will eliminate a lot of it. So this is the first reading. I'm glad we got it in this calendar year, so we'll be ready for the springtime. Any other questions or comments on this item? Again, it's the first reading. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 24-1832, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section 1.03 of Article 1.00 entitled Short Title Rules of Construction and Definition, Article 3.00 entitled Nonconformities, and section 29.02 of Article 29.00 entitled Schedule of Regulations.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 15, ordinance number 24-1833, introduced by councilmember El-Sawafi, synopsis and ordinance to amend section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 6329 Greenfield, 15,600 and 15,740 Lundey Parkway, from a TR Technology and Research District to a BC General Business District zoning classification. Resolution by councilmembers Paris and Abraham to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The applicant is requesting to rezonate three parcels from TA Technology and Research to BC, which is General Business District. As a part of the request, the applicant has requested to place conditions on two of the properties, 15,600 and 15,740 Lundey Parkway, that would restrict the use of, use to multifamily residential dwellings. So three parcels outside of the total, outside constituent, I'm sorry, yeah, constitute an area of 17 acres along the north side of Lundey Parkway and are underdeveloped. This does align with our master plan. Can we have our Planning Division come up just to talk about the conditions? The applicant has provided a letter stating of self-imposed conditions, which we're going to have her speak on, and this is the first of two readings. Kelly, if you can just...
We have a meeting, Council, you can read the unanime, and you can use your manager. So the petitioner has a self-imposed condition on two of the properties. So essentially, there's three parcels. The one on Greenfield Village is a straight rezoning to BC. That means they'd be allowed to do anything under that zoning district. The two properties that are internal, that do not have frontage on Greenfield, the applicant has self-imposed a condition that limits it to only multiple, multiple family dwellings, which is a special land use in that zoning district. Once again, what's outlined in the memo, and you've heard me speak on it before, and I'll continue to speak on it, which is that we have a really dire need for housing in Dearborn, and specifically different typologies, not single-family detached. So not only does this meet the master, a bunch of master plan objectives, but it also aligns with what we know is necessary based on, for example, we actually just got through with a housing market study that talked about how much additional units we are going to need in the city of Dearborn. So we see that to be consistent with the condition that the applicant has imposed.
All right, which is very consistent with what we've been doing throughout the area and that area as well.
That is correct. Yep, that TR zoning district, it's not very useful. I think it's, it's lost its usefulness for the city.
Yeah, I mean, that, that might have been like in the 90s. That was all technology.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And it does limit them. But for my colleagues and for everyone else, there's still a special land use, so it requires some buffers and so on and so forth.
Exactly, yep. And then the kind of the appropriate process for that is they come in through site plan review, and once they're ready, they would go to the Planning Commission. People would still be notified, they can still also have a conversation about, once again, the Planning Commission can look at the site plan, to your point, see if there's additional things that we want to include in that site plan to make it kind of work. But we also totally agree that this is a great location for additional multiple family.
All right. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? From the public? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 24-1833, an ordinance to amend section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 6329 Greenfield, 15,600 and 15,740 Lundey Parkway, from a TR, which is a Technology and Research District, to a BC, which is a General Business District zoning classification.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 16, ordinance number 24-1834, introduced by councilmember Paris, synopsis and ordinance to amend the fire protection and protection chapter, Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending Article 2, Section 10-38, and Section 10-38.1 entitled Fire Prevention Code, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Hamud to table the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Fire Department, to improve public safety and ensure building compliance with modern safety standards and minimize the risks associated with fire hazards, is asking the council to adapt 2024 International Fire Code, or IFC. New materials and construction methods have emerged since the publication of the current 2015 IFC. Adoption of the new code would keep Dearborn aligned with best practices for fire prevention. The adoption of the new fire code is necessary, is a necessary step to protect the lives, property, and environment of our city and our community. This updated code reflects best practices and technology and vast, and vast advancements, excuse me, and growing awareness to safe, fire safety challenges, and will keep us, will play an essential role in safeguarding our Dearborn future. This is the first of two readings. Mr. Fire Chief, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Council. Fire Chief Joseph Murray. So, yeah, we, it's been a few years since we updated our fire codes, so we're, are looking to upgrade it to make sure that we're staying compliant with best practices. We did do our due diligence on it. We did exempt a few of the appendixes, which we thought were going to be unfairly harmful to business owners, in the, existing business owners within the city. And we've worked in conjunction with the Building Department to make sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of the ordinance adoption. So our ISO rating is coming up this year. That is a big part of it. We do get a number of points for adopting the most recent fire codes, so we need to definitely get this adopted so that we don't lose points on that, that rating as well.
Right, and that affects our insurance rates, our residents, and we've talked about that many times, correct?
Yep, that's what the insurance companies use when they, homeowners insurance, of course, property insurance. It basically assesses your fire protection as well as your water infrastructure and your dispatch.
And then, Chief, just for ourself and the residents, the 2024 adoption, is that, is that like the, I know it's the newest, but is that done every few years? Because I know, I noticed that ours last time was from 15. Is that the last time it was updated?
They do put out periodic updates. I don't know, I don't think it's quite annually, but there are a few revisions. We try to, typically, the revisions aren't that significant, so usually after a few years, they start accumulating a little bit more. So that's why we've done it now. And what, obviously, one of the new things that we're looking at right now is lithium ion battery storage.
Of course.
Which is, not yet, we don't have clear direction on it yet, but I mean, that's something that when it, when it does come out, we'll, we'll address it with the council as well.
Okay, so it's our understanding that there is periodic amendments, but that you keep on, this is your wheelhouse, so you keep on it to see when it comes, it needs to be re, totally re-adopted, and that's what you decided at this time?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief Murray.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 24-1834, an ordinance to amend the fire prevention and protection chapter, Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending Article 2, Section 10-38, and Section 10-38.1 entitled Fire Prevention Code.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 17, resolution by councilmembers Paris and El-Sawafi, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize and appropriate a donation from Ford Wells Headquarters in the amount of $1,500 as a contribution to the Jingle Bell Bash event expenditures and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'd like to thank Ford for their $1,500 donation to offer expansion program and activities for attendees during our Jingle Bell Bash, being held December 14 of this year. Has requested the Finance Director be authorized to recognize and appropriate the donation for the event expenditures with immediate effect. This should be, this is the first one, correct, Mayor? Jingle, or the second one? Second one? All right, so hopefully, hopefully, we will have another good turnout. I know that we, we always do top-notch events, so hopefully, we'll see how it goes. And again, for this item, we'd like to thank Ford for the donation. Any questions or comments?
Why don't we talk a little bit more about the event?
You want to talk about the event?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Herrick?
Thank you. Unless somebody from Economic Development would like to talk about it. This is a lot of fun.
This is a lot of fun. It's in the West Dearborn downtown, and last year, I know some of the things they're planning to do again this year are what they did last year when it comes to things like ice sculptures, face painting, family-friendly activities. One of the things that I had a lot of fun with, and they've used it a couple of times, is the axe throwing. I saw a photo of it, so I think they're going to do it. Not real axes, these are, these are Velcro axes, and they stick to the walls, so that's kind of a fun thing for adults and children who participate. So, great event to come out, West Dearborn downtown, coming up on the fourteenth, Saturday the fourteenth, and just encourage people to come and check it out because, again, it's lots of fun for the whole family.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Any other questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? The unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item number eighteen, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Abraham awarding the best source contract to M C D Architects in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for architectural and engineering services for the renovation of Esper and Bryant libraries and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, Esper Branch Library was opened in nineteen fifty-three and was last renovated in November of two thousand. The Bryant Branch Library also has repairs and modernization that is needed and is being incorporated at a discounted rate for design fee by, for both buildings, both branches to be designed at one request. Both library buildings have suffered significant structural deterioration, including roof damage, window seals, frames, and compromised walls. These issues present an urgent need for remediation and to encourage building safety and use and functionality of our libraries. The planned renovation and service enhancement at Esper as well as Bryant Branch Libraries present a unique opportunity to positively impact the Dearborn community, particularly through the focus of STEM, the science, technology, engineering, arts, math, and music. Our city is known for its rich cultural diversity, vibrant, family-oriented population, and emphasis on education. These improvements will benefit our future commitment to such, to such a standing. Purchasing on behalf of the library, I think we have some photos as well of this.
No, there's no photos of what?
Of the.
The truck?
Yeah.
Oh, got it.
Just an example design, I know it's a design. It's still not done. We have the director.
This is not our library, this is not our library.
It's not our library, but it's what we're using just to show that we're modernizing, okay? Purchasing on behalf of the library recommends award of the contract to A and E Services for renovation of both Esper and Bryant Libraries and to M C D Architects that was selected as a best source through a competitive exception due to their extensive background with Michigan Municipal Library Designs. Requested amount is not to exceed five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for Esper and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Bryant. The project is being requested with immediate effect with a goal of construction to take place and end by the summer of twenty twenty-five with an estimated eighteen-month timeline. So we do have our director, let the step forward. Something exciting, right? We're renovating two libraries, so it's, I know it's the initial contract for the design, but it's still a big deal.
Correct. Betty Adams, library director. I did not get sidetracked this time.
All right.
It is a very exciting time for the library. I'm very happy to present this proposal to you all, and I'm happy that we're incorporating Bryant into the design schematic as well. One of the things that we are trying to tackle with this is not do Band-Aids, do full service, full renovations, and full evaluations of the spaces and give them the life that they may have once seen at one time. Some things that are old will return new again to these facilities, but also to see the innovation that's available to the community that other libraries have that we can incorporate here and to have the imagination of our team put it all together for the community to enjoy. So I'm very excited for this proposal to go through, if you all allow, and as soon as that happens, we will hit the ground running, and our teams are so excited to work with M C D. I do personally have experience working with them at a previous library. They did phenomenal work at that location and still get accolades in response for their previous work, including the example that you guys displayed. Redford Public Library is the most recent major-scale project that they did. And if you wanted to take a perusal of that area, you can start to get ideas on what is possible in our spaces at Esper and Bryant. We're hitting Esper first with the design all the way through the construction phases, and I'm very excited to see the end result and how the community will be impacted in a positive manner to be bringing new life to this location that desperately needs full overhaul.
Right. No, I appreciate it, and these are challenging. I mean, libraries of the past are not what they are today. I mean, we've said that many times, and having this type of outlook on what is best served, and there are more study and social aspects to it because of the internet, but they still want to go for the study and the aspect of other, the resources that we have. So I'm glad to see this, and I'm glad that we're taking experts because we do need, you know, you could spend, you could throw money at problems, and it doesn't fix it if you don't have the right people.
Absolutely.
So I was very pleased to see the work that has been done in the past because I think this is a challenge, you know, for today. People are using less, trying to go online more, but not going to the facilities. I think this will bring them back to a lot of facilities and different workspaces that are not traditionally there as they were back in the seventies and eighties.
Absolutely.
Over this will get us there.
Absolutely, and I would like to make it a public note now, do not expect a shush library in the coming days of these new leaf that we're turning at the library. We will have areas, and Henry Ford Centennial Library does already have a sound map available on our website, but we will have locations available for those who have auditory issues and things mapped out. But that is, you are your, you're one who chooses your own adventure at the library, and we want to provide that opportunity for all.
That's great, that's great. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, thank you, Director Adams. Libraries have always been a community hub, but I think in a lot of cases, especially with the technology where you can purchase or utilize materials from online, as Council President was saying, people not, might not think there's a reason to visit one of our brick-and-mortar library branches unless, I know often, it's certain age groups, like young families come in for reading hours, that kind of thing, and so we'll see a lot of that. And one of the, one of the things that struck me in the materials that were given to us was enhanced lifelong learning opportunities. You know, why do, how do people come together to collaborate, to learn from each other, work together? We've got workspace on, at the Henry Ford Centennial Library where people can collaborate on things, but to, for our smaller neighborhood branches, you know, what's going to bring more people in? And building those community connections, I know, is a focus. So you've got new design elements that make it vibrant and exciting, but also the methodology that you're approaching, that it's not, as you said, a shush library, it's more, you know, what can we do here in this unique space? And the focus on STEAM, science, math, art, and technology, that, that's a good direction to go for kids that are kind of in the middle of what we're talking about, so thank you for that vision.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, thank you. Next item.
Item number nineteen, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Abraham extending the contract with Orkin in the annual amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for a term of one year with four one-year renewal options available for citywide sewer vector services and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Economic Development Department in conjunction with purchasing recommends the extension of a contract for a citywide vector services through Orkin with a, for one year with four one-year renewals. The cost of the one-year contract is one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars annually, and shall be charged to the general fund neighborhood services contract services vector control account. This program is now, has a year of data collection, heat mapping, and analysis provide evidence that bait consumption in the sewers is reducing the amount of above-ground complaints by thirty-seven percent for this year. This extension of the contract will allow for further measures to control our vector population in our city sewer system. Any questions or comments on this? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I know that there's often a discussion regarding using any kind of chemicals to deal with rats, and we've seen how effective this is, so I'm glad that we have been, found something that seems to be very effective because, as Council President stated, the numbers are showing we're not getting the calls that we got a year, two years ago. So that combined with educating the public, which remains priority about, you know, how to prevent rat harbinger on your property, how to spot that in the neighborhood and report it immediately before it becomes a problem, that continued education is a critical component to managing the issues that we know all communities face when it comes to vector, you know, having rats in the area. So I'm glad this is working so well and that our residents are seeing relief from it.
Right, thank you so much. And, you know, for myself, I'd like to thank the administration's forward-looking and data-looking aspect, especially with the economic development. I mean, let's be honest, a few years back, this was a very, very hot point. There was many that were saying nothing can be done, we don't know what to do. People are saying that there was no problem, which is always a problem when you don't acknowledge that there's an issue. But the fact that we found out what's best practices, I think, is very, very important, going into the sewers and getting the root cause of the problem. I'm always big on fixing the problem from its source. I think this is a tremendous program. I like the fact that we did one-year contract to see if it really worked, and it did. So hopefully, we're seeing the difference. I know we got some maps, I didn't want to share those on the screen, but we're working really hard to pinpoint these issues, and I'd just like to thank the administration and the mayor for his vision on actually collecting data, looking at best practice because there's always a solution, folks. Some in the past would say that there's nothing we can do, there's no, you know, it's everybody else's problem, or you're leaving your can outside. That wasn't the case, there was a severe issue, and we did address it, and I think it's going in the right direction. We're not done, but we're going that way, and we're going to continue to stay on it as evidence of this contract.
Yeah, I mean, I just a few comments. One, the director control team is doing a phenomenal job. It's not just one solution we're throwing out, it's multi-faceted. I just dropped a video, which is why, I literally just dropped a video at like seven, ten, also talking about the feral cat program that also helps address the rat issue. We now have a hundred and fifteen cats that are out that we have trapped, neutered, spayed, and returned back to neighborhoods, working with the Friends for Animals Metro Detroit. Friends for Animals Metro Detroit is actually layering where they return the cats also with the rat heap map. And so seeing, this is actually, I have data going back to twenty eighteen, but we're expecting the lowest number of rat complaints at least since two thousand and eighteen. So almost a decade, we're going to hit the lowest number in the last decade. And so I think all the tools that we're utilizing, including this program, are all helping achieve that.
Well, we do appreciate it, Mayor, and you've always looked at things, there's always several methods. There's never one way to fix one thing, there's always multiple facets, and especially in these problems, so we do appreciate that, and it is working. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. You know, there are some other things that I know that we have been working on, and in particular that I wanted to bring up is cleaning up some of the commercial areas, you know, the dumpsters and the trash, and it's been very important to all of us to make sure that we try to alleviate this problem. But concerns that have been brought up, I, how do we address, Mayor, going forward to tell people that this has been seemingly successful so far based on some of the data that we're getting back, but it doesn't really say that we have less rats, maybe we're killing more of them, but how do, how do we come up with that number, especially if it's in a sewer system and we're baiting? Is there any public health hazard as a result of this baiting, and it's in the sewer system that apparently these rats may die? So I know there's a public health concern also that's being brought up.
Yeah, so zero public health concern on this aspect, given the state is also inspected than how the bait was placed, that's one. Secondly, I'll say that the rats are dying in like the sewer line, not your water line, so this is not, you know, lines that are coming back into your house by any means. Third, we know you, Orkin is doing this based on law, based on state law and meeting all standards. To date, we've had zero complaints or alerts come forward about any animals or anything of that nature. This is obviously, this block is on like a steel chain, it's not something that anybody can consume, any animal can get into a sewer and consume, but also if a dog or something wanted to consume, you have to consume several blocks, which is extremely difficult. It's, you know, first and foremost, how would the dog get inside the sewer? I think that's the first question we have to answer. And the rats traditionally, it's most effective in the winter months, given the rats tend to harbor in the sewers in the winter months, to your point. In the summer months and the spring, we have the Clean Streets Crew, which is out. We actually had them go through downtowns, eight through midnight on Fridays and the weekends to pick up loose leaf garbage. We started power washing the dumpster enclosures. We were very heavy-handed as it pertains to citations, plus the feral cat program, plus what we're doing here, plus we went out to our parks and tried identifying any rat colonies at parks, at large parks. And so I think doing all of this collectively is what's achieving this result. And so we can base it only by the rat complaints that are coming in. We don't have data that determines how many rats we actually have in the city, there's no city rat population census that I know of. And so we're hoping that we keep trending in this direction and just keep moving forward.
The only other comment that I would have too is that we all share in this responsibility to abate this problem. You can go through any of the neighborhoods, the days before trash collection day, and for several days afterwards, there's a lot of trash out. There's a lot of trash that are not in containers, that are left out on people's easements, that squirrels, rats, all sorts of animals are getting into. It's our responsibility as residents too to make sure we secure that and we don't put out the trash too early, and we definitely take the containers back when we're supposed to. So we share in some of the responsibility also. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item twenty, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Abraham authorizing additional expenditures to Nationwide Construction Group in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to allow a change order for digital signage counters for the three parking garages and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The demand for efficient and user-friendly parking solutions has increased, and our downtown parking garage continues to grow. Digital signage counters for parking, parking garages are essential to addressing several critical needs related to convenience, traffic management, and improved user experiences. With the use of digital signage counters, provide real-time information on available parking spaces, reducing the time and frustration for drivers facing when searching for a parking spot. The city currently has a contract with Nationwide Construction Group for the installation of fence and gates at the three parking garages. Purchasing has received a request from the Department of Public Works and Facilities to seek approval not to, not to exceed the amount of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to allow for a change order to additional digital signage for parking space counter at the parking garages. Is requested that the council authorizes the additional expenditures with immediate effect to expedite the order of the digital signings. Any questions or comments on this? We do appreciate this, it's definitely going to make it easier for people to flow into the business district.
Yeah, I would tell you, go look at Wagner Park, the Wagner Deck, the fence is up on the edge. All the mechanisms for the gates are in, with the exception of the actual arm, yep.
Yeah, let's get in there. We do appreciate, these, these things make a difference, and I think they make people feel, I mean, first of all, the security aspect of the top floor, I mean, you've highlighted that several times, but I think this is definitely good. It's a good problem to have more and more people getting in there.
I know it's an expense, but put in perspective, like, we've expended up to like twenty-five thousand dollars in one month in police overtime on these parking decks.
Yeah.
Because of the loitering that occurs in there, and so we know that this is going to be a good deterrent.
We do appreciate it, we'll save on the other end, appreciate that. All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item twenty-one, resolution by councilmembers Elso Wafi and Paris approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-five SMART Municipal and Community Credit Contract in the amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city of Dearborn has partnered with SMART since nineteen ninety-seven to provide transportation services for Dearborn residents ages sixty and older, along with individuals with disabilities. These service, this service is available Monday through Friday from eight-thirty a.m. to three-thirty p.m. Transportation remains, as long as I've been on here as well, to one dollar each way and two dollars for a round trip. However, no one is refused for any hardship situations. The program transportation transports approximately two hundred seniors and disability, disabled individuals each week from curb to curb services during a typical year. Seniors must be at least the age of sixty and older with a valid proof of residency to have the ticket. Director, can we have you up real quick on that? The park and recreation department employs three part-time dispatchers annually and up to eight part-time drivers to conduct this service. This is also being requested for immediate effect. So I know, Director, I just wanted to highlight, I know this is a great program that, I don't know if it's been getting enough attention to, I know that the people that know, know, you know, it's like, you know if you know. But to get these rides, to have the ability to move around through the city for that low, low cost is something that we pride ourselves on. I know we continue to work with SMART and update the buses. I know there was a, an issue a few years back before your tenure of getting drivers that we could have, so I'd just like you to speak on how well the program's running at this time.
Yeah, so, good evening, Council. Sean Fletcher, Parks and Recreation Director. Just wanted to highlight that we average about five hundred and sixty-five riders per month, and this year so far, just under sixty-eight hundred rides, so that, I think that's very important. People need to get to various appointments, and they can get there in an affordable way. Sadly, the driver shortage has not subsided.
Yeah.
We're always looking for drivers, so that's kind of my shameless plug if, if you want to help out people in your community. We're always looking for drivers. We're always looking for drivers. We have a couple of great dispatchers, and I just want to say their first names real quick, Elaine and Kathleen, who do a great job. Scott Scott, James, Juan, Al, and Ron are current drivers that we have, and they all do great work, and like you said, very important work.
Yes.
And we do pay a fairly good rate for our drivers, so if there's anybody out there that has some spare time that would love to help out the community, we have spots.
Appreciate it. Director, just so people can know, what is the requirement? Because I know that is a bus, I mean, is there a CDL, what is the requirement?
I think that's a CDL for those vans, because they're over 10 pass, I believe, yeah.
Okay, and what's the best way if somebody wanted to, to drive a bus part-time? Is it contact the?
Yeah, they can contact our office, and we can get them all, yep, Parks and Recreation, and we'll, we'll get them in touch with the right folks. And I believe in some instances, we can try and help facilitate them getting the CDL license too. Like, we pay for it, but we can get them in contact with the right people.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very rewarding. I mean, you know, for myself, you know, I, I've had the other end where I've seen families have to take the keys from people, saying, you can't drive no more. That's not a pleasant situation. It's a freedom aspect, and a lot of these are for doctor's appointments and sexual appointments. And, you know, it's more of a freedom aspect, and it's more of a dignity aspect for our seniors. I think it's a tremendous program that we do, and I've highlighted it a few times on my CD TV show, so I think this is a great program, and I'm glad that we continue it. And I just wanted to bring some more awareness to it, so.
We do have some buses on order, some supply chain challenges, but those are coming, I believe, probably middle of 2025, so we're looking forward to that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 22, resolution by Councilmembers Perez and Abraham, concurring in the appointment of Thomas Saraglia to the Dearborn Historical Advisory Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have several of these appointments coming up on different facets, and we'd like to remind all our residents that these are volunteer, non-paid positions, and we really, really do appreciate they do a tremendous amount of work for the city. It's a great way to help, help your community, and we'd like to thank them all for their service. This item is to appoint Thomas Saraglia, how'd you pronounce it, George?
I pronounced it Saraglia, but I don't know.
Saraglia? I will go with yours.
I'm doing the best I can here.
Me too. To the Dearborn Historical Advisory Commission, the appointment is for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Jack Tate, curator, Dearborn Historical Museum. Yes, I think Tom has been volunteering at the museum for the last 10 years. He puts in an average of 650 to 800 hours a year in volunteering. He maintains our antique cars, he has, he's, I would say, of the commissions, items that we have been able to eliminate in the museum that didn't belong there, he's probably personally responsible for a good 25 to 30% of them.
Wow, that's excellent.
In researching them, and also getting items that belong to other museums to them. He's been a great asset to us, and I'm looking forward to him serving on the commission.
Thank you very much, Jack. Only question we might have is why didn't he get on that commission earlier?
Exactly.
Great asset, we do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 23, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and El-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Batul Hader to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is, the following new, the following appointments are a new appointment for an Environmental Commission that had over 65 applicants for this nine-person panel. The purpose is established, the Environmental Commission is to develop cohesive and integral environmental policies for implementing in our city project, and to enhance our air quality, water, and land, as well as our public health. It shall, it shall help us set goals and policies for the city and community to continue to improve the nature, our natural and, and to build our, I'm sorry, the nature and to build the environment around us. The commission will only act as an advisory group and does not have any regulatory authority. The makeup is important to mention, since this is the first time, nine members will be nominated by the mayor and approved by the council for three-year terms, and many of the appointments, because this is a new commission, have one-year terms, so to keep a staggered approach, since this is new for the first time. This particular item is to appoint Batul Hader to the Environmental Commission. This appointment is for a one-year term ending January, June 30th, 2025. Any questions or comments on this item? I would like to thank her for her service. Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 24, resolution by Councilmembers Perez and El-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Mashadi Asi to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This item again is the Environmental Commission is to appoint Michal Asi to the Environmental Commission, appointment for a one-year ending in June 30th, 2025. Any questions or comments? Like, again, to thank them for, thank her for her service. Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 25, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Renee Zaza to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Again, this item is to appoint Renee Zaza to the Environmental Commission. This is also a one-year term ending June 30th, 2025. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 26, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Lamis Sorar to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This appointment is for Lamis Sorar, Environmental Commission, and this is a two-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Again, we'd like to thank her for her service. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 27, resolution by Councilmembers Perez and El-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Paul Boyce to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Again, appointment of Paul Boyce to the Environmental Commission, this one is a two-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 28, resolution by Councilmembers Perez and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Asma Said to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Asma Said will be appointed to the Environmental Commission. This one is a two-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Again, thank her for her service. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 29, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Perez, concurring in the appointment of Ramsey Semua to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And again, appointment for Ramsey Semua for the Environmental Commission, appointment is for a three-year term, June 30th, 2027. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 30, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Perez, concurring in the appointment of Mahmood Tanana to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 30th, 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Again, this is for the Environmental Commission, Mahmood Tanana, for the appointment of a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 31, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Abraham, concurring in the appointment of Mohammed Dabaja to the Environmental Commission with the term ending June 2027, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Again, this is Mr. Mohammed Dabaja, Environmental Commission, a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. One, one second. Director?
Evening, Councilman, I'm the Public Health Director. I just want to thank the over 60 people who applied for the Environmental Commission. We've had this commission on the books for some time, but this is the first time the city of Dearborn's ever activated it. And I want to thank all those members who applied. I also want to thank Brad Mendelson, our Deputy Corporation Counsel. He was really instrumental in helping us figure out what this commission will look like, how to get it on the streets, and also Samir Deschbande, the Environmental Health Manager, who's in the Department of Public Health, for going through all the applicants. These nine that we've selected are incredibly gifted, talented people. We have someone with over 30 years' experience in the Navy. We have someone who's a bricklayer, we have a PhD student, we have young people, we have people who are a little bit more seasoned. We're really, we have people from the South End, the East Side, West Side, and Samir was really instrumental in making sure that that diversity of Dearborn was captured. So we're excited about this commission being activated.
No, I, I appreciate it, Director, and I, you know, early on, as our staff knows here in the council, we were looking at some of the commissions that were never used, and that we were going to eliminate by ordinance, and the mayor did say this is something that it was on his wheelhouse. For me, I, I see the names and know most of these people. It's a tremendous honor to get some of them, I don't know, some of them, I don't know they have time, I'm glad, I hope they do, but 65 people applying for nine, it shows you the interest of the community to be involved in this, and I think a lot of it has to do with the credit of the mayor, and of course yourself, of actually seeing, this wasn't, you know, you started with the Department of One and some fellows, and we've started getting grants, and, you know, the, the stuff that's happening in the environmental aspect is showing the residents that we do care, this is not a political plug, this is part of the city of Dearborn going forward, and I, and I think this is just another step to it, so we do appreciate it. It's a great, great, great process. Councilwoman Harris?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Abazie, for your commentary and talking about the group as a whole, because it's true, the resumes are very impressive. I think most of us have had some interaction with more, one or more of the applicants. And you mentioned Paul Boyce is the, the former Navy veteran, and thank him for his continued service to Dearborn and our community. Over the last few years.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Over the last few years, Mr. Boyce has been in touch with myself and I'm sure other council members numerous times about environmental issues, especially concerns about trees and our tree canopy, so I'm glad he has an opportunity to share his lifelong experience on that commission. One of the other applicants is involved with the League of Conservation Voters, she, or they live right here in Dearborn, but that's a statewide organization that's having a positive impact on environmental issues and environmental awareness. Couple of the members are employees of the Dearborn Public Schools, so further enhancing that relationship between the city of Dearborn staff and the Dearborn Public Schools and the community on these things that affect quality of life for everyone. As you said, no matter what part of the city you reside in, you know, pollution doesn't stay in one place, our air and water quality affects everybody. Oh, and again, you know, some of the applicants have been involved in coming up with creative solutions to addressing environmental issues, especially in the South End of Dearborn. So thank you for kind of addressing them as a whole, because that's what struck me, is looking at the applicants that were selected, and of the other people that applied, I know that they will remain interested and probably attend those meetings, because, let's remind everybody, all of our commission meetings, all of our council meetings are open to the public, and appreciate feedback from anyone that has thoughts on these matters. I've been advocating to activate this commission for four years, glad it's finally happening, and in partnership with public health and the other vision that the mayor has laid out before us, very exciting time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for bringing this forward. I, I do have a couple of questions, though. We did get some backup material about this commission that's been established here now tonight, we're looking for that. My question is, though, you know, is this going to meet every month, every quarterly? Is there any kind of direction? Will this be direction from the administration or your office of what things to look into? Are they going to be self-directed, or is this just still to be determined in the future? I know the first couple of meetings, they're probably, you know, the rules of order, what are they going to, you know, nominate a chair and all the other offices to go forward, but what is this going to look like? How is this going to be directed in the future?
Yeah, the beauty of this commission is that it's going to be run by the residents, and as is outlined in the ordinance, the cadence, the regularity of schedules, they'll select a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary amongst themselves, and they'll determine that will be involved. Samir, the Environmental Health Manager, will be the city official responsible for helping support all the logistics of the commission. He'll be a part of every single meeting, but in terms of the cadence, how regular they meet, it's going to be up to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the normal process, though, just for the residents, the committee, we set, we approve the people, and then the commission, their, their board regulates their own self. Is that correct, Mr. Roemer, with their own by, their own bylaws? All right, any other question? You have another comment?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Harris?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to give a shout out to Public Health again for addressing a lot of these environmental questions that have come up prior to the commission being established. Samir does a fantastic job, as do you, Director. Director Abazie presented at Rotary Club of Dearborn this past week about his position and the work being done in his department, and I know that he's been to other organizations to talk about the work that they've been doing, and always is very well-received. Your passion, and Samir's as well, your passion and your understanding of where we are and where we could be, and it's just, as you've said, you know, you're a Department of One, but what does it take to get to where we could be? And the energy that both of you bring is impressive, and I appreciate your work. Oh, and, and I, and also, I know that he impresses the, the people through other organizations that we've been in. I, I attend environmental meetings through Soundcocks, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and he represents our city very well in, in that space.
Samir's amazing, we're all, the city of Dearborn's lucky to have him, and also a shout out to Maria for facilitating that Rotary Club invite, it was awesome to be there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any objection to, did we already have a unanimous roll on that, Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry?
Did we have unanimous roll on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so at this, next item.
Nothing further on tonight's agenda, thank you.
All right, great. So from the council, I had a few things, and then I'll open up to my colleagues. I just want to mention and thank our Finance Director, and the audit that we usually go through yearly with Plant Moran came out excellent, and Mr. Drackey for their, for their efforts, you know, going through, I can't remember the number of transactions, 10,000? I can't remember that.
Over 10,000.
Over 10,000 transactions and to be audited on a professional manner to make sure you have good practices that are continued are a very big deal. So I'd like to thank them and recognize the fact that, you know, we have been doing this, and we have continued to strive for excellence, that also helps with our bond ratings and a ton of other things. More importantly, I wanted to highlight some financial news that I think are very, very important. I wish we had some of our retirees here, because these are things that I've talked about in the past. Some people feel like if you put money into the stock market for five years and make no money, that your statement is, we didn't lose anything, so that's a good thing. I don't agree with that, folks. So I just want to report that in five years, the city of Dearborn's funds grew from 71% to 81%, and that's $64 million in growth. It also reduced our burden, just so everybody understands, when our funds do better and we do the right things that we're supposed to, that means we have less obligations and more money to spend on our taxpayers' daily lives, but still paying our obligations to our retirees. This is a big deal, I've made this a point many times. Some people hear part of it, but not all of it. But the bottom line is, I challenged Plant Moran and asked him if anybody in the state of Michigan had a better rating than we had, as being 81% funded, 82% funded on a mixed blend of both, both the retiree pension and their healthcare, and they did not have anybody that they could think of top of mind. For the residents, just to understand too, in 2019, our obligations were approximately $36.5 million. Because we're doing what we're supposed to and doing better, and not saying we didn't lose anything, so that's a good thing, we now, our obligations are $24.5 million. So that's $12 million more dollars annually that the council and the administration can appropriate. It's a very big deal, and I, I was very happy to see this, and I wanted to thank all the team and, and the financials, our experts that we hired and continue to listen to their advice. So we do appreciate that. I thought that was well, well taken, I'd like to thank the Finance Director. I just wanted to bring up a few other things. Goodfellas, I know there was a lot of people in the streets, there was a great turnout, and I know that this weekend, I believe they're doing the wrapping, so still more things to come from the Goodfellas as well. Great time of the year to, to have that.[1730.83] Great time of the year to have that. Also, I wanted to highlight, I don't know if the chief is still here? Chief is still here? Yeah, just for, if you can. I wanted to let our residents know how serious we take thieves and regardless of what it is, chief, and I know that we had spoken, but I know that, I wanted to bring, highlight this, I know it went out on, on video regarding car theft and what we had to do and how we used the drone. Folks, I highlighted the drone program. We are leading the state of Michigan in the drone. The State of Michigan Police Department actually sends people to train with our officers in your department. You know, we have to have the best technology, and these technology, from flock cameras to drones, we can't have, let the bad guys have all the good equipment. And the fact that we're using it, the other thing, folks, is that we can only arrest them, and if the court is not going to put them in jail, that's another problem. But chief, can you speak about this recent event? Because I think it was an excellent highlight of what our officers are doing on the daily aspect.
Isa Shahin, police chief, thank you for the opportunity, Council President.
Yeah.
This most recent incident really highlights how we are, have the cutting-edge technology here in the City of Dearborn. We were able to locate the stolen vehicle, first and foremost, by having a license plate reading camera inside the police car. That's in addition to all of the fixed license plate reading cameras we have. So a police officer on daily patrol doing his job came across a stolen vehicle that was parked in the neighborhood.
That's right.
And the vehicle was unoccupied. And so that individual was creeping around in the neighborhood, probably do something nefarious or commit a criminal act. And so we couldn't find him immediately. So we immediately launched the drone, which is another piece of amazing technology that we have here in Dearborn, and we're able to identify this individual in a yard and keep an eye on him as he was, you know, prowling around the yard. Officers were able to convene on that individual, and then a foot chase ensued, and ultimately he was taken into custody without injury, where he was charged with possession of a stolen vehicle and various other things. But what I'd like to highlight is the investment that the city council, that this mayor has made in technology and public safety. And when you combine that technology with good, old-fashioned police work, you have really good outcomes. And I always say it all the time wherever I go, the City of Dearborn, whether it's the council, the mayor, the community, you're all pulling in the same direction, and it's all in support of public safety, so I'm very grateful for that. So are the men and women of the police departments. So thank you.
We appreciate it, chief. I mean, we can sit up here and look at the data and know to fund it, but it takes the implementation and what's happening with the officer on the street. But as my colleagues know, when I took over as the council president, I immediately asked for each of, with your permission, asked for each of my colleagues to do ride-alongs to understand, because there was a lot of early-on complaints about the flock cameras, how long are the cameras out there, where's the data going, why are we keeping the data? And I famously said, you know, we're going to keep the data as long as it takes to catch the bad guys.
Yeah.
And the bottom line is, these cameras are telling us if someone, if there's a stolen car. And folks, someone stealing a car and then going around the neighborhood is not for a nightly walk. And for me, I think this is a very, very important tool that we did not have. And chief, as you know and before, that's why I asked every one of my colleagues to take rides with the police officers to see, these cameras are not looking for problems. They find a stolen vehicle, and that usually leads to criminal action. And now the drone, from what I've seen on the video, is the heat-seeking aspect of the drone.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, which we've also used earlier this year to find a child by the wooded area in the U of M.
Correct. Yeah, we, we've used it at crash scenes, we've used it to find lost children, we've used it to find suspects. At fire scenes, it's a valuable resource to find hotspots within a fire. It's just an amazing tool, and we're very grateful that we have it here in Dearborn.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can't thank you enough, chief. And I thought, you know, during the holiday times, this is very important. And as you know, chief, thanks for putting out the PR aspect, because it followed through to all the group chats in the neighborhood. I actually live in the neighborhood where that was, where that happened. So I really appreciate it. It makes, it makes a resident feel safe. That's what we're here for. The government's job is safe, the safe, you know, the security and the health, the safety of the resident, and the expenses, we have to do it, and it's working.
I appreciate it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about it.
Absolutely. Thank you, chief. Lastly, before I turn over to my colleagues, I just want to wish everybody who is celebrating a very merry Christmas, happy holiday, and new year, where this is going to be the last meeting. I know there's been a lot of doom and gloom internationally around for the year. It's always tough. For me personally, I like to always just reflect on the year that has happened. I think that for myself, and I'm sure for many others, we have a saying in Arabic that says, "Hamduloh," thank God, right? It could always be worse. For me, I always like to look at that, and I think this was a great year, regardless of all the bad things that might have happened internationally. You know, when you look at where you're doing and your families around you and everybody's health is around you, it's a great, it's a great feeling to look back at the end of the year, especially a lot of people that have children maybe in colleges or away to come back home during this time, whether it's the Thanksgiving that just passed or going into the new year to reflect on, you know, your health and your family. Because at the end of the day, you know, when we all leave, because we all will, will leave, right? You have these moments and these times that you will not get back. And it's always funny, because I have my kids write where their goals are, you know, I'm kind of like that. And I think that's an engineering part of me, I know, I'm not sure. But I have them write that where your goals are, five years, and every 10 or 12 years, I'll pull them out and we'll go through them. It's a great time, folks, and I just wanted to let everyone know what a great year we had in the City of Dearborn. I hope that you were blessed to have a good and healthy year, and remember, it could always be worse than what the cards you were dealt. So thank God, and I wish everyone a great holiday season and a happy new year. My colleagues, whoever has anything else on the council. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. Goodfellows, who were already mentioned once, just, I want to reiterate what a rewarding experience it is. I have the opportunity to be at Leon's after the big Friday of the collection and the Saturday collection. I'm out there on Sunday, kind of as the last sweep effort to try and raise some funds. And I work on Rotary Club of Dearborn team with George Dreny as our, our lead of our team. And the thing about being at Leon's that's different than being on the street corners is, well, first of all, it's not as dangerous, and thank goodness we have the support of our police and fire departments at some of those busy intersections. But I get to hear from people who firsthand have had hardship in their lives, whether it was, you know, parents who are saying, you know, Goodfellows helped my family, but more often, it's an adult now reflecting back on their childhood and those important moments that council president was talking about, you know, with your loved ones around you, where they might not have had a warm meal or toys to play with if it weren't for organizations like the Goodfellows. And if you didn't have a chance to donate to Goodfellows, of course, you can donate online, but also Toys for Tots. We've got a number of collection stations here in Dearborn, one's at the Dearborn Police Department. So you can drop, drop a new unwrapped toy into the Toys for Tots, and it will get distributed to those in need. And so many organizations, you know, that distribute turkeys and provide assistance. And then, of course, we have a number of food pantries at our Houses of Worship across the city if people are in dire need. So it's a time that, for me, it reminds me how, how our community stands up for and helps each other, or people that come to visit our community, we're there to help each other throughout the year. But especially right now, it kind, it comes to the forefront, because we see a lot of these giving opportunities. So thank you for everybody who does participate. And if you're in need, reach out to those organizations, because there is help available. Then I also wanted to mention something as we were talking about the equipment in the police department. This is a good time of year to remember if you have working smoke detectors in your house. Our Dearborn Fire Department, thanks to a grant, is able to provide any residential property with smoke detectors. Just call the Dearborn Fire Department and get on the list, and we'll have fire interns who come out and we'll install those at no charge, because it is so very important that we have working smoke detectors in our homes, because they do save lives. And I, I didn't know if, check online what's happening at the Performing Arts Center when you're talking about family activities. Wonderful performances coming up at, at our, you know, our world-class theater, free parking. Last weekend, I was astounded at how good the performance was of the Nutcracker. The Americana, ballet Americana from Taylor was there, just outstanding. But we've got the Motor City Brass Band coming up, Vanguard Voices and Corollary Groups doing annual programs that are heartwarming and, again, world-class. So please, you use our city. We've got lots of opportunities here to enjoy the holidays. And to all, I wish a very happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilwoman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I could, chief, could I just ask you a couple of questions, if I could, on a topic? I think a number of us in the community have seen some information come out from your department in regards to drug overdose kits or narcotics kits that would be handed out to families wanting to possibly find out about their children, you know, that they would have responsible for. What is, what is the name of the program again, so people would hear it? And what is it all about?
So Isa Shahin, police chief, it's called Parental Evaluation Resource Kits, and they're drug testing kits. And the program was taken from the Livonia Police Department, who had some success in their city. And so it provides for Dearborn residents, or if you have students that attend Dearborn schools, you can walk into the police department and receive a drug testing kit that will test for five panels of drugs, but in addition to that, alcohol and nicotine. And so the reality is, it's not a substitution for a substance abuse program, it's an opportunity for parents to be informed if they should choose to. We don't take any data information, we don't take a driver's license, it's totally anonymous. The police department just made sense from a perspective that it's open 24 hours a day, and I think we've built a relationship over the years of trust with our community. We partnered with the Department of Public Health, and we thought that, the reality is, I want to see how successful it is. And so in the first weekend, we handed out 15 kits, but ultimately, it's just to inform parents that can make informed decisions on their own. And ultimately, inside that bag, in addition to the test kits, there's a number of resources. And so the question might be, well, what do I do if they test positive? And so in that kit, you have information on cessation programs. We partner with Access and LAHC, some local nonprofits, that they could reach out to if they thought appropriate, but ultimately, their own doctor, medical professional, it's really up to the family.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to highlight this, too, is I wanted to find out our sourcing for this, and you made mention about the City of Livonia or Livonia PD. Did we get funding for this, or how did we get the kits to begin with? How did we come and buy them?
So the kits are not expensive. They cost about $3 a kit, and I started with 100 kits, and I used some funding that we had in the police department. Now, if it's successful, Councilman Paris, and I intend on finding some other funding for it, I imagine there's a lot of partners that would be willing to help us.
Sure, I appreciate that.
It's an opportunity I thought that would be great for the community.
And it is, and I appreciate making mention, too, that there is no registration for it, no name-taking, what have you, so, because, you know, it is kind of a private thing, you know, so I really appreciate that. And then, you know, for our community, too, I was able to, you know, get some stats in the past, too, but, you know, this is an important issue. You know, we all know families that have had the heartbreak of losing, you know, a family member or somebody that they know, a neighbor, what have you. But just simply knowing, you know, just even in the last five years, I believe the stats show that we've had 55 drug overdoses resulting in death. And in the last five years, too, we're averaging anywhere to 80 to 90, you know, overdoses in our community. So having something like this and taking a look to see if this is another useful tool, you know, that we can use to try to help our community in this, I, I really think it could be something that's good. And then we have some other resources, too, like, you know, Access has already, you know, got their area on Michigan Avenue with that $20 million substance abuse, you know, facility that will open up in the future here, too. So I think the community is well aware that there is a problem, not just here, but everywhere. So I appreciate bringing this information forward, just so we have an idea of how it developed and where we're at now.
Thank you, Council.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any else, Councilmembers?
If I can.
Yeah.
Like my, my colleagues, you know, wishing everybody a great holiday. We've had some struggles this past year. Look in on your neighbors. Look in on your family members. This is a time that we've got PTSD with our veterans, we've got people that are not doing well physically, mentally. Take a look at your neighbors, your neighborhood, your family, and be with them. This is what the holidays are about, and see if we can make it a year-long thing to be kind to people and be part of the community. Thank you. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Appreciate it. Anything else from my colleagues? Okay. Anything, Mayor, from the administration, yourself?
I think just continuing along, thanking the council for the work this last year. It's, I can't believe this is our last meeting of the year.
That's right.
We're wrapping up our third year. I did not know this, this is our last meeting until you guys started announcing that. Wishing a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a Happy New Year to all those we're celebrating over the next month. And as everybody has said, obviously, many of us have family that are impacted directly and indirectly with all the events unfolding overseas, and so hopefully, you take the time to, you know, be around those you love most. That's really what this time is about. And so if you have that privilege, hopefully, you're afforded the time to do that. Otherwise, thank you to the residents. It's been a blessing, this last year's been a blessing sincerely. The last three years have been a blessing. Thank you to the whole team, to all the directors who sit here out of their own accord, not because of the city council rules by any means. You guys like to come each and every single council meeting, and so we appreciate that you like to sit through these meetings. To the residents who participate in these council meetings, God bless you. You could be doing so many other things on a Tuesday evening if you choose to sit with us, so thank you so much for coming out. And yeah, that's what I have for you. God bless you all, and hopefully, we'll see you healthy and more prosperous in the new year.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clerk, anything from yourself, your department?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the couple of the council members that were, had time to spend with me, with the Goodfellows, the council members, Herrick and Al-Sawafi. They did a tremendous job and got our numbers higher than they've ever been in the corner that we've worked at, on the corner of Otter Drive and Cherry Hill.
Wow, great.
We're going to be raising over $5,000 thanks to their efforts and the other folks that worked. So the amount of generosity in the City of Dearborn always has been there, but it continues year after year, and I couldn't be happier. Of course, we get the people that donate the 20s and the 50s and sometimes the $100 bills, but more importantly, we get the people that don't have a lot of money, but they still give. They give change out of their pockets, they give change that they find in their cars or the dollar bills. Those are the things that are, that make this organization the great organization it is and makes Dearborn the great city that it is. So I'm very encouraged about Dearborn's future based on what I see out there on the street. So Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, and see you next year.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will turn to the public comment. Anyone here to, our final public comment, anyone here to address the city council regarding city business? There is comment cards, and you can also just be acknowledged by myself and come up to address the council. Well, Director, do you have something?
We forgot to talk about the 100th anniversary.
Oh, really? Okay. All right.
Betty Adams, Library Director. I just wanted to put it on everyone's radar with the Jingle Bell Bash going on from 2:00 to 6:00 on Saturday.
2:00 to 6:00.
You would be able to peruse over to the Bryant Library and enjoy the 100th year celebration that is planned from 11:00 to 5:00. There may or may not be cake around 1:00 o'clock, so just saying, if you want to pick your time, just before the bash. So I hope to see you all there, those who can make it in the community. We appreciate the 100 years of support for that branch.
Yes.
And with the landscaping project going underway, as well as this conceptual design being framed, we are very excited for the next 100 years for that location.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director.
(inaudible)
The real case. All right. Anyone else here to address the council regarding city business? Okay, here in Seana, I will entertain a motion adjourned.
Adjourned.
Motion by Councilman Al-Sawafi, we are adjourned.